Citizen Participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-A agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. I do have four blue cards.
Okay.
The first one is from Ms. Chris Cipperly of Dearborn, would like to address the Board regarding negotiations.
President Mead, Superintendent Malaco, and Board of Trustees. As you know, the Dearborn Federation of Teachers is currently in negotiations with the Board for a new non-concessionary contract. Because our current contract was a five-year contract, I am sure that there are DFT members, Board members, and community members who are not aware of the sacrifices the DFT and other employees have made since 2010. It was then that our lovely, non-public education-friendly legislators in Lansing made brutal cuts to the school funding, hitting Dearborn especially hard with a beginning loss of over $14 million in one school year. To help the district during these extremely challenging times, DFT and all employees took salary cuts up to 6.1% and step freezes, suffered mid-year layoffs and end-of-the-year layoffs, accepted major class-size increases and increases in workloads. Budget cuts continued for a couple of years, and then slowly, very slowly, per pupil funding has started to increase, and our hard-working, high-quality teaching staff and other employees have helped our district obtain a comfortable 13% general fund balance, so the district does not have to borrow money over the summer months, worked many additional hours to help students increase test scores and graduation rates, earned various academic awards and recognitions, and remain an exemplary public school district in the state of Michigan. Our teachers have and will continue to share various above-and-beyond initiatives that they take part in to help all of our students. So we are doing what is good for students and continue to negotiate additional language with that goal. Now it's time to also recognize what is fair for teachers. Now that we are moving in a positive financial direction, with increased per-pupil funding, a six-year enhancement millage, the reinstatement of at-risk funding, continuing increases in enrollment, we need to work together at the negotiating table to recruit and retain high-quality teachers. Yes, we need competitive starting salaries and wages for new hires, but please remember that new hires are not voting on this contract. The high-quality teachers we want to retain are going to be voting. So we love to hear accolades, but we also need to feel recognized for all our hard work and previous financial sacrifices through an increase in our salaries and wages in these negotiations. While we all know contract negotiations involve money and benefits, I'd like to give you these magnets as a little reminder of all the other things that our contract covers and the return on the investment you get for recognizing your teachers for the hard-working, dedicated and professional, or dedicated and passionate professionals they are every day in every classroom and in every school in our district. Dr. Malaco stated that the week of May 7th is Teacher Appreciation Week. What a wonderful gift you could give to your teachers with a strong tentative agreement for them to ratify. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That was great. Thank you.
So I'm guessing, but the people standing are probably teachers in the system.
Do we have a motion on the table now after that speech?
Well, thank you for being here and showing your support for your union leader. Next item, or next card, please.
Mr. Hussein Badun of Dearborn would also speak to us, would like to speak to us regarding negotiations.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Malaco, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to talk to you tonight about the negotiations. Specifically, I also wanted to bring up the mission statement of Dearborn Public Schools, which is obviously students first, which is something we obviously hold very dear, all of us. My question is, how committed are we to this mission when, as I see around me, colleagues who work two, sometimes even three jobs, in addition to working this job, which is not just a job but a career, and I see around me colleagues who I started with five years ago, who've been basically weeded out of the profession on their own or for other reasons, or just simply found a higher-paying job. We're seeing fewer, we're seeing fewer and farther between quality teachers here in Dearborn Public Schools, at least from what I've seen in my setting right now. You know, when I was a kid at Oakman Elementary in my youth, we had a tremendous elementary school teacher at Oakman Elementary named Mrs. McIsaac, who really, we all fell in love with. But there was also a substitute teacher for Mrs. McIsaac that we all really fell in love with, and he's actually right here with us today, Mr. Malaco. We used to always really look forward to Mr. Malaco being in our class when he came in, and we love Mrs. McIsaac as well, and that sort of buy-in from the students, you know, I mean, that obviously reflects magnificently on our entire school district. And I have this vision where we have Dearborn students graduating from Dearborn schools, going to college, and eventually wanting to make teaching the profession that they choose because of the bonds that they built with their teachers in Dearborn Public Schools, because of those connections, because of the love that they saw for their jobs that they saw from those teachers back then. And yet, we have teachers now who are leaving a year or two after they come in, and I just am curious, how could we possibly be that committed to putting students first when we have a situation where we are not quite getting the amount of quality teachers we should have because our starting salaries are uncompetitive, our step schedule is uncompetitive, and it's really disappointing to see this when really we should have essentially a self-sustaining district with Dearborn high school graduates going to college, coming back and becoming Dearborn teachers. And I'm hopeful that you and I both see this the same way, and we can hopefully work towards a negotiation process that helps this district become more competitive and attract the sort of high-quality teachers we need to make this the best district in, not only Michigan, but the United States, because I think we all agree that there's more diversity here than we'll see anywhere else, and what better vision could there possibly be than having graduates from this district teaching the future of this district? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Kathleen McCormick, teacher at Henry Ford. Would like to speak to the Board about Henry Ford leadership.
Looks like you brought your crew. You were a community at Henry Ford, so of course I brought my community with me. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I'm Kathleen McCormick, a STEM teacher, as you can tell from my lab coat at Henry Ford Elementary. I teach kindergarten through fifth-grade science students. And as you can see, here's my amazing community behind me. We've all been hearing all the great press we've been getting lately for Dearborn Public Schools and the achievements that we have, all the great achievements we've been making in this district. I thought you might appreciate a behind-the-scenes look at how we're reaching all these amazing achievements, or as a scientist would say, give you some evidence. I had prepared a slideshow, and I found out last minute that I wasn't going to be able to show it, so you have a hard copy of it. I will also be sending it to you. I didn't want to give it to you ahead of time because I don't want to spoil the surprises. And the reason I chose the slideshow is because it represents where I teach. Henry Ford, we have a lot of EL learners who need visual aids to help them learn, and I myself, I'm a visual learner, and that's why I'd originally chosen to do the slideshow. So I apologize to the audience for not having a copy, but if you'd like to look at it, we will be putting it up on the Henry Ford blog. But as being, since we're a green district, I didn't feel, it wasn't within me to do that. It's just against what I believe in. So that being said, on the first slide, you see that the strength, one of the strengths at Henry Ford is that we have district and building leaders within our district. In this photo, you can see two of our amazing teachers who are presenting to our staff to help us enrich our skills. We also have many teachers who have presented at our Fall District-wide Professional Development, staff meetings, late starts, and we also meet on our own before and after school, and this is all things that are over and above our job responsibilities. In addition to that, on the next page, you see that we share resources and lessons electronically within our building, the district, and even at Wayne County Leadership Meetings. Other ways that we are community leaders, and I kept this to one page, so this is just a little picture into all the things that we do in our free time. We are community leaders by supporting our staff and students and building a community. Some of our examples of how we do that is that we have teachers who are on the District Teacher Evaluation Committee, Student Growth Subcommittee, Science Resource Subcommittee, the Wellness Committee, which as you know was a 2017 winner of Best and Brightest for Public Schools, DSEHP, Healthcare Advocate and Charter Member, which you know has saved us a lot of money for the district. We've also hosted events, including music and art professional development sessions at our building. We facilitate meetings for science enrichment teachers. We have, as you saw in the earlier presentation, we had teachers present at the, and our principal present at the MRA Conference Instructional Partnership Coaching. We have DTR training at our building. We, I, it's myself, so I don't like to say so about myself. So we also have a green school facilitator, and for the 10th year in a row, we have achieved the evergreen status for green schools, and that's the highest you can get. You have to earn over 20 points to do that, and we usually have close to 30. We have early childhood specialist leadership team. We often tutor during lunch and after school. We have lunchtime eat with a teacher to build that community and build our student leaders. We also have lunchtime detention and restorative circles for the students who are struggling. And most importantly, we have constant communication with our parents via Class Dojo, WhatsApp groups, and blogs to ensure that they know what is happening with their students. As was mentioned a little bit early in our presentation, professional development is key component to, I have to slow down, sorry, is a key component to building strong teachers. Some of the professional developments, and again I kept it to one page, that our school has, school members have attended are Summer Elementary Forum on Reading Intervention, Summer NGSX Training, Summer Training of the New Staff on Gradebook, over 100 webinars throughout the year, EIE Facilitator Training, Wayne Riza Science Leader Meetings, SHAPE Michigan Annual State Conference, MDE Conference on Student Growth, which was also mentioned, Michigan Music Conference, Detroit ORF Workshop Series, Michigan Music Educators Fall Conferences, and various professional development sessions at Wayne County Riza. Now, why do we do all this? As you've heard earlier, we have a passion for our career, but the main thing is that we want to build student leaders. So the reason that we are leaders ourselves and support each other is so that we can meet the goal of our job. Some examples of how strong leadership from staff helps to mentor and build those student leaders for today and beyond, the first slide shows my lovely students in their lab coats, and they, my students from kindergarten up, are lab assistants in my weekly class. They see them once a week. They wear the lab coats because it tells everybody else in the class that they are responsible for the materials and answering questions during that session. Every child in my classroom receives multiple opportunities to be the lab assistant. They also, my older students were given the opportunity to be STEM leaders at our STEM Night, which you'll see a little bit later, and they escorted people, all our volunteers, to their stations. So you can see that we have many ways for students to be leaders. Another way is our wonderful Robotics Club, which is in our first year, and I'm so glad to hear that we got some money to support that, and they have been working really hard to participate in robotics competitions. Our Being Good Committee is run by students. Every Friday, they come up with an inspirational song to sing, and they acknowledge one student from every single classroom in the school for something that they did that was amazing over and above, just like our teachers do. I also would like to mention in passing, and I don't have a slide on this, is our wonderful PBAS celebrations, which teachers take many hours to prepare and offer the students many options to celebrate reaching their goals for the month, or several months, it's, I don't know, it's monthly, reaching their goal for the month of making good academic and behavior choices. And the reason that we don't have any pictures is because we're so busy running the events that no one has time to take pictures, so sorry about that. Next up, we have our Peer Mediators, which is a new program this year. It's kind of, it's actually recycling back to us, and the children are doing an amazing job of solving problems at recess and different times of the day so that they are the leaders and they are the ones helping their peers resolve their conflicts instead of it being something coming from an adult. Our music club is also amazing in building leadership skills. I know Dr. Malaco and Mrs. Pachclough, you've had the opportunity to come and see our wonderful trumpet drumming at the Green School programs, and it's just an example of how our leadership is not just in the core classes, but it's also within our enrichment classes. It's very important that we work together as a community to show the students that we're all part of one large community, helping each other. The School Musical was a new highlight this year, and you can, when you see this in color, you'll really see the enthusiasm of the students. Our annual Cipriano Run is important to our staff because we would like to honor Mr. Cipriano, and it's important to our students because it gives them an opportunity to show their skills. Teachers go to this on nights and weekends along with the Martian Marathon, and you can see photos of staff members supporting the teachers, I mean, the students. We also have an annual staff and student volleyball game that again builds a community and gives the students the opportunity to see their teachers in a different light. Another thing that we feel very strongly is helping our community, and I'm really, the picture on the right, I'm going to highlight because in the past, we have run a hair donation at school, and we've had a hairdresser come in and cut our hair. This year, I wasn't sure if that was going to be possible, and I had students approach me and say that even if we couldn't have it at school, could they still donate their hair? So this is a picture of one of the students who donated their hair, and I even had a toddler who had got his first haircut and donated his hair. So to me, that shows that by leading by example, you are creating the future leaders of our community. Some other ways that we've helped our community in general is that 74 items were donated to Wayne County Homeless Shelter, along with $650 that was raised during our annual December ornament sale. Two other fundraisers were Jump Rope for Heart, which raised 1,500, and Pennies for Patient, which raised 3,500. We haven't held Relay for Life yet, but we have a picture from the past where we got excellent press for building a community connection to the Dearborn Fire Department. Not only did they donate a check to our team, but they donated a dog tick, which was very exciting for our students. We feel very strongly about the Green School Initiative that has been brought to our district through Wayne County Riza, and some of the initiatives that have helped us reach that evergreen status is practicing the three Rs. In the first photo, you can see the students recycling. They do this weekly, and not only do they recycle, but they actually check the recycle bins to make sure there's no contamination, so nothing gets rejected when it goes to the center. This year, part of our Green School Initiative was a recycling skit that the students wrote an original script for, perhaps sound effects, and it will be shared with the entire student next month. Our teacher also got participated, participated in our Green School Initiative by having her students do upcycle sculptures, which when you come to our Green School program, you'll get to see a little sampling of that. One of the things I'm especially proud of is that the students, two years ago, designed, raised money for, and planted a native habitat garden, and I know some of you are also there at that, and got a chance to plant in our garden, and when you come and visit us, you'll get to see it blooming. So our final thing that helps us reach our Green School program is that we have, and I'm not sure how many years it's been, participated in the annual Alternative Green School Program. This is a unique program that was offered as an alternative to the annual parades, and our school has taken advantage of this from the beginning, and in fact, I was very happy to see that we were acknowledged, and it's coming up in the Superintendent Happening Taping, so look forward to that. We also have four special nights that we celebrate with the teachers and the staff together, and it's another chance for the students to see us in a different light. Our first event is Social Studies Night, and if, when you see the picture on the right, you won't believe the enthusiasm of the child. She's just reaching out to the instructors in that room who were guiding her through the night. Math Night, you can also see, we had a large turnout with the same amount of enthusiasm. And our annual Literacy Night is one of our favorites, and as we said, since Literacy Month has just passed, it was great to celebrate that. STEM Night is a little bit different from the other events. So while the other events are manned by our wonderful staff, STEM Night brings in over 150 adult and student volunteers from STEM, Dearborn STEM Middle School, DCMST, Fordson Robotics Club, U of M Dearborn, and GM and Ford Motor employees. It also brings in members from the community, along with having collaboration with the district. One of the excellent ways that we collaborated with this district was we had the cable supervisor, who is so talented, create an amazing video. You will be getting a link to that, along with a link to a nice article that was in the Dearborn Press and Guide honoring our STEM Night for highlighting the STEM initiatives that are happening, not only at Henry Ford, but in collaboration with other schools in the district. So as you can hear and see in your paper, Henry Ford Elementary School, staff and students use their unique talents to bring together the students and the staff as a community and to mentor those students to become leaders for today and beyond. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and give you a little behind-the-scenes look at why we are receiving all these accolades. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very fine presentation. Thank you very much. You're probably wondering why I gave you more than four minutes, because I thought that if each individual got up there to speak, we'd be here all night. At any rate, that was very fine. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Heather Baumann, wants to speak to the Board about standards, basic grading initiatives, pilot at Edsel Ford High School. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Board and Superintendent, for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Heather Baumann, and we represent Edsel Ford, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about one of the great, just one of the great teacher initiatives that we're doing at Edsel Ford. I didn't go and ask them about everything, so. This is just about standards-based grading, and this idea's been around for years. In fact, it was brought first to my attention when they brought Rick Formelli, Formelli here, who presented to the Dearborn teachers several years ago. I became more interested in that time, and we started the professional learning community process, and as we were looking at how to improve students' performance, we looked at the standards-based, because we went, okay, we want students just to be able to retest on the portion that they got wrong on the test, not the entire test. They already know how to do this, it's just this part. So we wanted to break it down further and look at where the students were struggling in their learning. By breaking up the material into these individual objectives, we, as teachers, could give feedback to whether students understood each objective, not just give them one grade for the unit. We could also allow students to self-assess and go, okay, I get this part of the unit, but I'm struggling with this other part of the unit. As you can imagine, this took a lot of time and energy by the teachers. What did we need to do? Well, some of the few things that we have done in the past years in this professional learning community, and as we thought about the standards-based grading, is that we had to look at every course and break it into individual objectives. We had to ensure that those objectives were aligned to all of our state curriculum, even as the state curriculum was changing over from one thing to another. Once we had decided on the objectives that we found were important and that were aligned, we then had to get assignments aligned to those objectives. Then we had to rewrite our tests in such a way that it wasn't just, okay, here's questions 1 through 25 over all of these different things for your unit test. We had to go, okay, this unit test covers six different standards, we need to have six different parts of the test for you to take. And then we had to retrain our students from thinking into, okay, I have a three out of four, that's a 75%. No, that's a proficient score. And so we had to retrain them from thinking into proficiency versus percentages, because they were used to starting to see that from the middle school when they went into the high school. We're still working on that part. This was something that could not be accomplished in our one hour of prep that we have every day. So we got together, teachers, weekends, Saturdays, okay, over breaks, during the summertime, also during our prep hour. I meet on my lunch hour, we talk about what we need to do in order to align and redo our tests, and we are working on doing the standards-based grading. I have found it a very rewarding experience. I've been teaching here in the district for over 20 years, and I continue to find new things that engage me, engage the kids, and help me become a better teacher. This is one thing that I have found that I think is helping me become a better teacher. Why? One bad test score doesn't kill the kid. Because the test score is made up of four or five different objectives, so if they fail one of the objectives, it's not a big deal. It's easier to grade. I don't have to nitpick every little thing. I look at each objective, and I look at that and go, okay, is that, how does that look objectively, are they proficient or are they not proficient? Not as, this is 70% versus a 73% versus a 75%. And also, we've looked at more that the student's grade is based solely on whether or not they're meeting the standards, not whether or not, not whether or not they come to class, not whether or not they participate, not whether or not they do their homework, not whether or not they do extra credit, which is what a lot of students want to do, or keep a notebook, but whether or not they actually understand the standards that are in the classroom that we want them to learn. So I thank you, Board, for your continued support of teachers. As we try these new things every day in the district, and we try to meet these learning needs of our diverse community, this is just one of the many things at Edsel Ford that we're doing to try to keep our students on the road to excellence. So thank you for your time tonight.
I have a question. Is this all related to showing growth of a student's knowledge? Is it all under this category, or is this different?
Standards-based grading can certainly help show growth. We use it, for example, to give kids pre-tests and go, okay, here's what your test is going to look like, here are the objectives that you're going to have. Do you know it yet? The kids can see, well, yeah, I got this part, but I need to work on this part, and so they can work, we can tailor, they can tailor their own learning, and we can tailor the learning to them, so they can show growth from what they already knew to what they didn't know, and show growth throughout the unit as well as throughout the year.
Seems very positive. Trustee Hamud.
And I can't imagine the amount of work that went into actually implementing this, to actually change the way you're testing the students. Is this being adapted in every single subject, or are there specific subjects?
No. Not every single teacher, just the teachers who are interested?
Right, but I think it's like across, there's some in almost every subject at this point, and we're, you know, and we're communicating and discussing and working to, you know, expand it. Almost in every subject.
Yeah. I mean, I would be interested in the future to learn more about this. This was very intriguing, and, I mean, just from the brief comments here, I personally, I mean, I commend you, and if we can get some information about this and some of the studies that went into this, and who's implementing it, and is it only being implemented at Edsel Ford right now?
We have Dr. Patterson looking into this possibility, and there's a lot of research. In fact, at the conference, I was with Dr. Reeve's presentation just on Sunday, and this is an area actually that I, I actually... Almost in every subject.
I mean, I would be interested in the future to learn more about this. This was very intriguing. And, I mean, just from the brief comments here, I personally, I mean, I commend you. And if we can get some, some information about this and some of the studies that went into this, and who's implementing it, and is it only being implemented at Edsel Ford right now?
We have Dr. Patterson looking into this possibility, and there's a lot of research. In fact, at the conference, I was with Dr. Reeves' presentation just on Sunday. And this is an area actually that I, I actually worked on this at Salina. Well over in 2004, we had started a pilot, so I'm well-versed in the standards-based process. I've seen Marzano, Doug Reeves is big on it, Rick Stiggins, and a few others. But we have Dr. Patterson taking the lead as far as on a district, but we do not have this implemented right now across the district.
It'd be nice to get some information from that, but thank you.
There's a lot of interest by teachers as well. Ms. Maynor and I, we presented at, in September, last September, about what we had tried thus far and what, what challenges we're coming across and what we'd like to do into the future.
You're going to need resources for these teachers to, it's a lot of work to implement a system like this.
That's kind of why she's standing here now. Well, and you already are, you already are supporting. I'm going to a conference in May to help support this as well. So we, as a building, are talking and, and working in that. So I appreciate all that support that you're giving to us for that.
Does this approach actually help students to do better on the standardized tests?
That was going to be my question.
I mean, do you have any, any data on that?
I don't know that we have, we haven't, we haven't implemented it. We haven't implemented it for as long, for long enough to know that question. So, and I don't know that, that people who are in the standards-based, I think that they'd probably say that once it's going, that yes, the kids are more proficient in all these standardized tests, because you focus on all of the core objectives that all these standardized tests address.
Marzano has some research on a national level on this.
I want to know, since there's some subjects that are being taught this way, not in their entirety. And so if there's any way that we can get data that shows the students that have taken it with the objectives, and the students that have taken it without the objectives, compared to each other, how well have they done versus the ones who have taken the tests from prior? Do you get what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying. I'm in the math department specifically, and I know that even if there are teachers who aren't doing the standards-based grading, the tests are still standards-based. So they're written in such a way that the kids are still getting standards. They're still getting the same information.
They're still, they're still getting the same test.
Yes, at the end of it.
Right, so this is how we're just finding out.
The grading is slightly different.
Right, this is how we'll find out if it's, if you're successful, is if you have teachers who are implementing this and teachers who are not, but they're asking the same questions, how are the students performing on their tests each way? That's how we'll find out how well.
Control group versus experimental group.
But can we even get that with the changes that the state has instituted in testing?
I mean, there's, there's some data we can look at, but we're looking at more changes, and you complimented Mr. Winston earlier. There's another change coming. As far as the assessment, now the SATs, you know, at the high school and the PSAT have moved, so we can start, so we've had that for a few years. So we can look at that at the high school. But yeah, there has been some fluctuations, but we can still gather data.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we done with blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item, please.
Approval of Minutes. Approval of Minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee Meeting, March 12, 2018, Board Report 17-98. Executive Session, March 12, 2018, Board Report 17-99. Regular P-12 Meeting, March 12, 2018, Board Report 17-100. Recommended Action, Make Any Necessary Corrections and Move Approval of These Minutes.
So moved. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yeah, on the regular minutes, under the citizen participation, Ernie Oz mentioned briefly and then handed us a packet including about late, later start times for high schools. That wasn't included in the things that he had discussed. We might want to add that because I know that's near and dear to his heart. So it's under the citizen participation, and it's under Ernie Oz. I meant to make a phone call when I read it the other day, but I didn't get to.
Okay, it's moved, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous.